My name is Laura Schipren and I am calling the planning board meeting of Monday, June 12th, 2023 to order at 6:38 PM. Sorry for the delay. And as you heard, the meeting is being recorded. And I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hofstetter's present.
Robert Darian, present.
Laura Schipren, present. But I also have the people online and here, introduce yourself, please.
Alyssa Struthers.
Hi, Alyssa.
Jonathan Voss from Monchiset Regional Planning Commission.
Yes, can I, can you remind me what department you are?
Uh, planning and development. We're working on the MBTA zoning district.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then could we just have a pledge of allegiance join me?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to our veterans and all of our, um, emergency first responders. We appreciate everything they do for us. 1.3 chairman's additions or deletions. We have a quorum. Yeah.
Can I just add a 3.8? And that is under correspondence. I forgot to mention that. It's correspondence.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
I'll just put correspondents at 3.8. Okay, thank you, Beth. Um. Okay, so I asked Beth to add under 1.3 that I wanted to make some remarks. Regarding the Realtor Day on the Hill, which occurred today. We met with Senator Cronin. We heard the Lieutenant Governor speak to us about the housing situation. And you each have a copy of this. So basically, and I also asked for Representative Scarsdale to be, um, noticed now on all of our future meetings. Anything that has to do with housing. Previous representative was very helpful in the housing portion of what we had to do. But now what we're being requested to do is more intense. And Jonathan is going to probably give us an update tonight. But, um, and you may know about all of these things that are in the works right now. So housing production, the Realtors support the efforts of the state and it's, um, House Bill 233 to improve housing opportunities promoting, um, despair, you know, desperately needed housing, uh, production. Now, in, I've been involved in housing now for over 40 years. And I will tell you that 40 years ago, we were told by the President of the United States at that time that we've had a housing shortage. And at that point in time, it was nowhere near what we have today. Um, during that 40-year period, Townsend was one of the towns that actually instituted a moratorium for two years where there was no construction being done. Um, what I haven't gotten yet for figures, but I wanted to get was in the last, um, I would say since 1980, probably, we should go to that, 1980, 1985, to get a count of what the actual increase has been in our housing units. I think it's important for us to know that and what we have done to ourselves here. Because what we do know is that the town is 1,000 less people than it was in 1990. So we need more housing, but yet our population has decreased. I mentioned this before, and I'd like to get those statistics for us to discuss further. Um, we, um, we also support the House Bill 2727 slash S1787. This is a program to help, it's a financial program to help firsthand home buyers save money to purchase a home. So they are going to allow $5,000 a year to be deducted, this will be state, to be deducted from their taxes to put away to buy their first home. So if they do this for, say, five, even three to five years, okay, they'll, they'll have money for a deposit and they'll have money for their closing costs, which will be very helpful. It will give them a tax break on that $5,000 a year that they save. This way, it's an initiative of, nobody's giving you anything you're earning. This is money you earned. You are now learning to save it, so it will help you buy your home.
That hasn't been passed.
No, this is in works right now.
Okay.
And we had our day today on the Hill was to speak to all the representatives or was made from the different boards and whatnot, which is throughout the state, and to let them know about the bills that we support and why we support them. Um, because they will actually be a positive impact on, um, buyer's affordability and whatever, to be able to purchase in the future. So the next one that we addressed was the transfer taxes. And Realtors do oppose this because it's almost like you're gonna pass a bill that will help affordable housing and then you pass tran, and then you're gonna impose transfer taxes on all properties. It isn't just higher-priced properties, it's on all properties. So it, it kinda isn't negative and a positive and washes each other out. So we were opposed to that. We, and we let our feelings know, known about that. Um, fair housing and diversity education. This is, um, well, some of you may know this or not, but all Realtors have to take continuing education. Um, so many hours every two years before they can renew their license. What the Realtors have passed themselves is to have continuing education. I think it's a minimum of two hours regarding, um, diversity and fair housing. The problem is that we may do it ourselves as licensees and because we're Realtors and we abide by a code of ethics, that does not affect, there's about 33,000, 30,000, let's say 30,000 rounded off Realtors in the state of Massachusetts. Twice that amount, or 60,000 are licensees. They are not Realtors. They are not mandated to take this continuing educate, this part of the continuing education. What we're asking the legislators is to pass this bill that will mandate it for all licensees. So not just Realtors. Okay. The next one was homeowners afflicted with, oh, I'm not sure how many of you know about this, but there's crumbling, um, concrete foundations. So this is, I think it was more affected houses built in the 1980s, I think it was.
The 70s and 80s, mostly in central Massachusetts.
Right, and they didn't mention that, but they're, they don't know. Cause they're finding that it's coming to other areas. Apparently, there's some that was mentioned today in Westminster. So, and I know that those were built in the early 80s. So, um, this we are, of course, in support of. They're looking for some kind of notice of risk, uh, about this to, um, potential buyers. They're also looking for homeowners that need help. And because to try to fix something like this, it's thousands of dollars, could be $100,000, okay? So if you have a property that's worth 300 or 400, it could cost you 100,000. Um, so, and then, um, and another part of the bill, uh, takes important steps to educate them further. So, uh, again, trying to prevent something that we as Realtors didn't know before. And apparently, the legislation didn't know before until things started falling apart or crumbling. So that's a bill that's before them.
What, what is the purpose of the bill?
To educate and to help find funding to help them. Okay, if maybe, and I don't think they can take it all on themselves. So anyway, it's something to try to help these people. It was an unforeseen situation. I don't know, I don't know why they can't go after the manufacturer. I, I don't know the whole ins and outs of that.
My understanding and the basis was that. And that period of time, there were only a couple major concrete plants producing concrete. And the aggregate, which is the stones with filler material, was contaminated. Meaning that the cement adhesion gave way to the aggregate. And so.
How's in the crumbling?
Concrete is like, um, like baking a cake. It's got several ingredients and everything has to work perfectly for it to become a cake. Um, so now we has reverse osmosis here and then all the pieces are coming apart. Um, and I have a client right now that has a property in Palm, Mass. With the same situation.
What was the year on that one?
It looks like that's ever, 1976.
Oh.
And it was a race ranch and, um, uh, there's no way I could.
Okay, well, we'll see what happens with this legislation, if there's any help for these people. And then, um, the last that I'll talk about is rent control. Um, government regulation of rents raises the cost of housing by removing current housing from the market, inhibiting development of desperately needed new multifamily housing, and incentivizing rent increases to maximum allowable level. Um, that's going to not encourage development of the multifamily homes because people need to be able to make money, or why would they do it? So then you're, so you're defeating the purpose of getting more housing.
Right, so rent controls aren't good.
So, so those are the issues that were brought up today and that are before the legislature regarding housing. Um. God, and that just went out of my mind. I did want to bring up. Um. Well, and we talked about this a little bit before. The whole thing is about increasing opportunities.
Um.
Allowing.
Can we go back on this one topic?
Well, okay, I was just bringing it to your attention today. This is not for, which one did you want to discuss?
Real estate support for crumbling foundations.
Um, I don't know anything more about that. So I think until something is presented to us, we don't really have anything to discuss.
Well, all it's, it's really just saying they wanna help. It doesn't say what they're gonna do.
I don't know how.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how. Hi, Jerry. It's not mine, but sure.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, is this here for, for Josh? Okay, just, just slide it over. So you can.
I'll just put it here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Jerry, thanks for attending. So. Okay, so 2.1, oh no, excuse me. Um, 1.4 approval of the minutes of April 18th, 2023 and May 22nd, 2023.
I can send those out if you need.
They are here? Oh, they're here. Okay. Um, that's 1.4. And does anybody have any questions or concerns, or do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April.
18th.
April 18th and May 22nd of 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
There's only a second.
Okay, any further discussion? Anybody have any changes or edits to it? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Carol Hofstetter, yes.
Robert Darian, yes.
And Laura Schipren, yes. Thank you. Okay, next. Under business 2.1 Townsend MBTA Communities Compliance Mission Project Update. And that's you, Jonathan, right?
That is, uh, in fact, May, yes. Um, all right, um, so on May 31st, uh, so two week, about two weeks ago, um, Townsend had a, uh, initial workshop amongst, um, municipal, uh, staff and MRPC, uh, to have a, um, brainstorming and first stab at MBTA districts for Townsend for potential sites and, um, uh, just, uh, exploratory, uh, purposes. And in that workshop, uh, there were four districts, uh, four potential districts that were identified, uh, recognizing, uh, previous, um, concerns that have been mentioned about avoiding, uh, his, uh, the historic village, uh, districts where possible. Uh, and also making sure to focus on areas that had the potential, uh, potential development uh, to, uh, the, the standards of this, uh, density instead of just creating a zoning district over, uh, existing land that, uh, wasn't going to be developed. And I will, uh, walk through those with you here. Is possible for me to screen share?
Yes, I'll take care of that. Hold on, please.
All right.
Okay, you should now be able to, uh, screen share.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so here is Townsend's, uh, compliance model using the proposed, uh, districts. So there were five that were selected. Um, or four that were selected. One of them, uh, was, uh, disqualified after some examination because of, uh, access issues due to a non-functional road. And they are the 125 to 149 Wallace Hill Road, 178 to 180 Wallace Hill Road, Zero Harbor Lane, and then 34 to 84 Proctor Road. Uh, these districts all, uh, center around the, um, Pepperell border, uh, with access to schools and, uh, shop, shopping center uh, to provide reasonable access as, uh, mentioned in the, uh, guidance for any, uh, proposed districts. And here we have the summary page for all of these districts. So these are all large parcels. Um, so you are going to see rather large model unit capacities, uh, for all of these with, um, the, the preliminary, uh, dimensional measurements that were, uh, used. Um, for 125 Wallace Hill Road, the final unit, uh, final unit capacity for the district was 1,000, uh, multifamily units. District two was, uh, the 70, uh, the 178 Wallace Hill Road was 638, the Zero Harbor Lane was 5,015, and District four, uh, which is 34 Proctor Road was, uh, 1,782. Now, these are all far in excess of any of, uh, the requirements for Townsend, obviously. And you see the final, uh, district, uh, uh, density of units per acre down here, which is at, um, four, above 40 units an acre for all of the proposed units. I mean, for all the proposed districts.
Did you say 40 units an acre?
Uh, sorry, what?
Did you say 40 units an acre?
Yeah, so they are all, uh, nearly triple the required density. Uh, as is with the, uh, current, uh, dimension, uh, dimensions and parameters that were, uh, used for the initial, um, exploratory, um, district generation. And this includes, uh, a limited open space requirement and, um, minimal excluded land and minimal, uh, parking in, uh, building footprint area.
Can I?
Yeah.
My understanding, we have to provide 15 units an acre. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, uh, the Townsend has to require, uh, has to require for 178 units at a minimum density of 15 units an acre.
I thought it was 30 to, uh, 85 units that we were applying.
Townsend's requirements are 178 multifamily units.
All right, so where did this? Where did this 40 units per acre come from? What's, what's that all about?
Okay, um, so the testing of each of the, uh, potential sites uh, calculates the allotted density per acre. Uh, is, is part of the compliance model, uh, when the parcels for any proposed districts are entered. And then along with any, um, dimensional requirements for the buildings. Uh, in this case, uh, there were height, um, restrictions of, uh, three stories. And then also any open land, uh, or open space, uh, restrictions, excluded land restrictions, and then any non-developable land restrictions. And then after that is all taken into account, it generates the possible maximum amount of, uh, developable units that can be put onto the land, and that's where the density comes from. Uh, in this case, all of them far exceed, uh, in large part due to the size of, uh, several of these, uh, proposed, uh, we're, several of these potential, uh, district sites. Uh, we were uh, leaned towards caution in this case of, uh, better, we start with too large of a parcel and then work our way down, uh, than the other way around.
I did that.
Uh, the smallest of the parcels that was, uh, proposed was 178 Wallace Hill, uh, which is at 15 acres, uh, for the total district. Um, but with, uh, regular, with, with the deep, kind of the standard default, uh, dimensional requirements, uh, would allow for up to 638, uh, multifamily units to be placed on that amount of land. And obviously, there is significant room to play around with that number by, uh, uh, requiring larger, uh, open space, uh, requirements. Um, and then also, uh, in terms of any additional, um, setback, uh, land or excluded land as well.
Jonathan, could I ask you?
Hmm.
These particular properties, um, was any consideration taken to the type of soils that are there?
Uh, there was, uh, consideration, um, primarily to, uh, towards, um, water. Uh, for, uh, for septic was the primary concern. Uh, so these were all, um.
Was the water department involved?
Yes.
So, eh, when, when you've come down to these four districts, which I think is wonderful if they have the soils for the septics and, and the town, then the water department says, oh, this would be a good place for it to happen and there wouldn't be, um, there's not a, they don't consider it to be a risk to have that many units put in that area. Right? Cause our biggest concern with what we were doing, you know, about a bylaw a few months ago, was the water department's concerns. So that's why I think it's really important if they agree. Yeah, well, you, did you deal with the Board of Health as well?
Septic.
On the septic. So soils were discussed and the what, well, I'm thrilled if that's the case.
Did they come up with a capacity for that?
Yeah, they did.
Not 40 units.
Well, there's the model, the compliance model.
Well, yeah, no, that's the, the, the 40 is the density per acre. So it is significantly over, uh, the required, uh, the requirement. So Townsend has a lot of leeway in this case to bring down that total number of allowed units. Um, 600 might be somewhat excessive for the, uh, community to allow to be, uh, built. Um, but there's a, there's a lot of leeway to bring that number down because it's nearly, it tripled the required density, uh, for all of the, uh, proposed districts. And these are just the, these are just the, uh, first districts that were selected. Um.
So the districts, they encompass several different parcels, right? It's not just one parcel and.
Two of the districts, um, District Three and District Two are singular parcels because those are the, um, those are the restrictions of the compliance model. Any, uh, proposed MBTA district, uh, has to, uh, for, has to adhere to at least one parcel. Um, cause you have to, you have to restrict yourself to parcel boundaries in order for the compliance model to actively, um, run the numbers.
Okay, and what about the ownership of those parcels? The two districts that you talk about, those are each one owner?
Mm-hmm. Uh, yeah, that was a, that was a concern that was mentioned during the workshop. Uh, because, you know, we don't want to show any, any favoritism towards just, uh, one property owner. Uh, but these lands, uh, were selected, in this case, for the original run based off of their, um, location on not being on, uh, non-feasible land and also, um, having a, uh, or at least in the case of District Three, but for all of them, uh, having a significant amount of their land also be, uh, not on sensitive lands either. Uh, even if that land was still feasible. Um, part of District Three, uh, still does have some sensitive, uh, lands that's still, uh, feasible for the model to be run on. Um, but the, it is the only district with any. Um, and, and in that case, uh, that, that's, as, as you mentioned earlier, that's, um, that includes, um, uh, soil considerations, uh, water, um, calm, uh, groundwater, uh, for different layers.
Storage, right?
Well, the soil conditions are the storage.
Right.
Consideration.
So if I'm correct here.
Mm-hmm.
There are four possible locations that we pre-sold it to us.
Uh, at least, at least. So any of these, uh, four. Uh at least, at least, so any of these uh four uh would work um. So and then we can continue uh explore additional ones on top of this.
Right, so obviously, we have the resources to provide this. I'd like to. To just. That maybe we consider two of them, two overlay districts. With lower density housing. That can provide for a more disparity of. Of occupant unit types. So I think. My. One of the things I think I'd like to see, if we have two overlay districts. And then we're not going to be forcing all this housing in one specific one. The density can be lower. And have less impact on one point than a road system and and everything else, so. Um so and then the other thing is if we're gonna do. If we're going to do housing, um it's the quality of that housing that we want to be important. Um and not just have a com- uh. I I would think that this town would like to encourage housing for multiple. Family profiles.
That's what this is for. I thought it was.
Talking about overlay district and multifamily. So it doesn't say that um. And so I think that's.
No, I think that's what the whole purpose of this is and and the bylaw. For the MBTA communities is multifamily housing, am I wrong?
No, we are doing multifamily housing, I'm talking about family prototype. So that they're not all two bedrooms or all one bedroom just to meet a requirement.
Oh, but that that's not part of this though, right? I mean, I understand that us, that planning, doing that with a application that comes in.
Well, no, I think. Here's what I'm suggesting here is a concept. Have two overlay districts, so the town's not burdened on putting them all in one.
Yeah, but can can we also have all four? Can we have all four?
You could.
Can we? Yes, okay, so that's what I was thinking, have four districts with the overlay, so you have more opportunities. I'm I'm really pleased because I'm surprised that you came up with as much as you did.
Right, me too.
You know, and and granted, it's not town-owned land, we don't own it, it only makes it. Available for somebody who wants to develop it.
So we, so I think the broader the overlay district have, the more opportunities. To have somebody actually come in and build them, alright?
I I I think so.
Right, so I think that's something I would support. Also, that means that it. If the more overlay districts we have. The less the density will be and it won't be all concentrated on a roadway or one right way or one street. And then I'd also want to, in our zoning bylaw, the town itself, in this overlay district. Encourage a disparity of unit types, so.
Yeah, but I don't know if we would put that in the bylaw, that's part of the policy we would do after.
That's not for you right now.
Yeah.
No, that would be in the zoning bylaw, we're gonna make a z- overlay district.
He's here for the districts. I think it's it's great that it's on the Pepperell side of town too and it's near the shopping center and it's near the high school. That's right, I uh great job. Great job to all staff, you guys.
Yeah, no, uh it's just. Uh folks at Townsend did a did a fantastic job with picking out uh feasible sites. Um as uh just um uh. Uh I believe this uh may have been been mentioned once before, but uh. Just as a point of consideration, an overlay district uh can be in uh. It it can be non-contiguous, so as long as it adheres to. Um those parcel boundaries, you can have it be two uh uh separate parcels. Uh that are both covered by the same overlay district, even though those parcels aren't necessarily connected.
Right.
Uh so that might be, that might be another way to, as as you mentioned, uh kind of. Spread the um spread the uh allotment of density over a over a larger area.
I I think you did a great job. Yeah, and I I would definitely think the larger to incorporate, if you've got. The board of health and the water department and others recommending this. I think that's probably solid ground compared to, you know, what how we were floundering about trying to pick out. Properties all over town.
Well, the other concern is this is all being. Forced right now by this MBTA district, but the town has other obligations too. Regarding affordable housing and and these other programs, so um. It would be an opportunity to accommodate a lot of these different uh requirements of the community.
Yep. Um as as part of the MBTA zoning district um. Uh Townsend can also uh require. Uh up to twenty percent uh affordability, uh up to a twenty percent affordability uh requirement for any units. Uh that are that are built, uh so it would be um thirty-four, thirty-five. Of the uh required a hundred and seventy odd. Units uh could be affordable as long as uh Townsend um is willing to submit. Or uh complete and submit the uh proof of economic feasibility, which uh. The state has per uh has now provided, uh so that can also be something that's explored in order to increase the amount of affordable housing. Uh that would be incorporated as part of the MBTA uh zone.
Is that something that they can do as part of this um grant?
Can you do that as part of this grant?
Uh yes. Uh yes, we uh we can, we can uh share the uh. Uh the required uh paperwork. And take a look at what that would entail for Townsend to complete and see if that would uh. That would be something that would be feasible for Townsend to do by the uh uh twenty twenty-five deadline.
Jonathan, can you show me where the high school is on this map?
Cause they're talking along Proctor, so that would be over here. Can't read the map.
The high school is.
No.
Uh I cannot tell the specific parcel right off the top of my head right here because. Map is zoomed out a bit, but it's uh it's uh towards this uh this intersection here. Near the um.
A line.
No, it's because the it's not, it's not near the Harbor Pond, it's to the right of it towards Pepperell.
Is that Wallace Hill Road right there?
If this is pro- that's Proctor Road and the high school is right there on that corner.
What are the thoughts that I have, Jonathan? Across the road from the high school, the other side of one nineteen. We already have a commercial district there. Um and.
Yes, with the Hanaford uh.
Exactly. And I wanted to explore that area as an overlay district where we can have mixed use. Um and which would better service the residents because they wouldn't have to. Jump in their car or drive somewhere every time. Um so that was one area that I particularly thought might have some great potential. Um uh and it's already developed and um and so. What land is available surrounding that and including that. Um so you could have. Um and sort of like have a mixed use there, so. Uh you have residential land business together, um which would make sort of a little neighborhood. Um so rather than just having just a broad block of. Buildings, all housing.
Do you know if um, cause we do want to encourage mixed use, but do you know if when all the departments got together? Uh did they discuss that land between? Cause the only portion there would be to the left of Hanafords.
Oh, that's a sale.
To the left of Hanif-.
To the left of Hanif-. Pepperell, no, to the left going towards Pepperell. You don't have, there's no land on the right.
The the piece has been off the sale forever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excuse me. If you are a hand. The rotten roads on the left.
Yeah.
And that area could all be overlay.
Yes, that's that's the parcel.
Behind Hanifids, if there's anything, okay? And then you can come down. One nineteen to the right of Hanifids. Um. To where the pizza places and beyond as a district. All, you know.
Did you explore that area off Main Street?
The parcel that you discussed, you you were talking about, yes. Parcel with very wet. That that was a very wet lot, I know Karen Chapman spoke to that.
What was the very white lot where?
The lot that we just said, it's a six or nine acre parcel, it's to the left of Hanif-.
No, yeah, we've we we did, uh it did come up. Uh definitely, um the only issue is there's a significant amount of conservation land and wetland in that area. Uh which is, yeah, as you can see here, a lot of that's uh in the is is marked as uh red for its non-feasible land. And then you also have a significant amount of that also being technically feasible, but also sensitive land as well. Um uh and so for the for the first uh uh. A attempt, we were trying to. Avoid as much sensitive land as we could uh uh just to make uh make life a little bit easier, but. Uh it's definitely something we can still, we can still explore, uh just uh in the compliance model, if not, if if nothing else.
There's still a significant amount of acreage there that is buildable and is reasonable. Um and if we can, I I think that. I'd like to look at that even in greater depth because I think it can offer a lot more. In terms of housing, not just in terms of available housing, but in terms of. The type of housing and the access to for a mixed use. Situation there, and I I actually envision calling it East Townsend. As a separate village.
So this, the thing is though. This is where it is, cause here's Todd, here's Proctor, okay? So the high school is actually between this. This is the town line for Pepperell, this is all red.
This is one nineteen right here. Right, this is one nineteen, this is the Pepperell line, okay? Down here is the rotten road.
Right.
The high school is right here. Okay, so see this yellow area? That's could be an overlay district and it could be mixed use. And there's a significant amount of land there, okay? That percentage of land is greater. Than this one or that one.
Um Jonathan, he's right, where you have pink is it is across from one nineteen. So it looks like this must be the Hanaford one here.
Yeah.
So it's it it's that yellow part that you still have as yellow on here.
Right.
That may have vacant land on it, if that, this this might be the only wet that's on that one. Yeah. I mean, I don't know how well they looked at this, but.
I mean, there's got to be. Well, the.
I don't have a problem with the overlay going over the commercial district. And if they wanted to end up, say there was something behind Hanafords. I don't know who owns it or how separate that parcel is unless it's all.
There is something here and then there's.
Yeah, but that's, this is Hanaford.
Yes, that is.
That's the mall.
Right.
So would they do it in the mall, cause it goes to pink after that?
Can do it behind the mall, can do it along rotten road.
You know, I guess it would be, if we're talking about creating opportunities here, um Beth, Jonathan. Um. Creating, making that part of a district for mixed use. Only presents the opportunity to the shopping center itself, the owners of that.
They own it, they might.
And there's an opportunity and they may do that. It may never happen, but I don't think it's a bad idea to include that in the overlay. Because the shopping center may have deep pockets, those those owners may have more money. And if they have the money to develop that, they would have to. Take care of sewerage, they would have to make, if they want to do a second floor over things and have it be some.
They already have a major investment in that property, so.
I think that's something to consider, I really do.
I do, I really, I I would, I'm really.
We can make the district as big as we want or districts and have that other one. I don't know, I would include that.
And they had they had advantage of that, it's 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 not virgin land either, it's already been a good part of it developed.
Well, this, we have a grant to be able to determine the districts needed for this zoning bylaw. We have to do it, okay, so so and the zoning bylaw is a given. Okay, at this point, and then we have to comply, so we have to have districts. And I think the more, the better.
Right, look at this, all of these three are almost very close together.
Perhaps they needed a little more input when they put it into the model.
I, well, this is our, this is our input now, and of course, there's gonna be um. I imagine we would have a puddle carrying before this happens, so there would be more, but the. I think the main thing was getting water, getting the department's input. And what they needed, and what's your next step, Jonathan? I mean, this is how.
Our our next step at this point is uh just to kind of continue along this avenue for a while of. Identifying possible districts and then refining the parameters uh of uh for the dimensional requirements more. So that when there are. Two or three, eh at least two or three districts that uh seem favorable. Uh or desirable, we can refine the um. Uh dimensional uh requirements uh and uh you know, the open space requirements and all of that. In the model itself uh to a better uh to suit Townsend's needs. So that that in district uh, you know, going back to. Um District Two, uh the one seventy-eight Wallace Hill Road uh parcel. It's the smallest of the, the smallest of ones that was selected at fifteen acres. But uh currently would uh allow for up to six hundred uh multifamily units to be put there. Uh but as we refine the um. Dimensional requirements, that number would be brought uh would uh possibly be brought down to something that would be more. Possibly be brought down to something that would be more, uh, palatable to, uh, Townsend as a community. Uh, closer towards that required, uh, that required one hundred and, uh, oh, about one hundred and eighty number.
Okay, so I, I just thought of something else here, because I'm thinking again, what Beth said. And the water department and because of that piece being wet there. I still like the opportunity of being able to do the mixed use there, however, if the water department is gonna feel like. The water will be impacted because of the wetlands there, should they decide to mix residential? With the businesses, which don't use the same, it's not the same with the septic systems, it's gonna be more, more water, more septic. Um, if you mix residential in there. Um, I think it's worth a discussion, but it does bother me a little bit, because water said that. Having said that. And we make one of the districts mixed use. We can change zoning.
Right.
We can add.
No, make it allowable.
Make it allowable, and then if, like, because that's such a big parcel that you're talking about there. If somebody did wanna put, say, I, I'm not, I'm not thinking six hundred units, but.
No, they're twenty, they're thirty.
Say they're gonna put it, well, you gotta, okay, for mixed use, you're gonna have to think more than twenty or thirty units, okay?
Right.
So, because you wanna have, you wanna make something where maybe they put in. A little strip mall on this sixty acres, where the people living there, like you talk about a little village. The people living there can use, can walk to, can roll to, whatever it is.
Jonathan, we have to sell this. We have to sell this.
Okay, um, no, I, I, I understand absolutely. You can, um, you, you can do mixed use. Uh, you just can't do it by, um, you can't have it as a prerequisite within the, um. Within the zoning bylaws itself, uh, but you can certainly allow for it in, uh. Within any of the, uh, multi, uh, the multifamily, uh, districts.
Okay, cause we don't wanna make, we don't wanna make it more, we don't wanna make it restrictive. The thing now is to open up opportunities, if it's allowed with water and sewer that we have. With other restrictions that we have on the town, it's by the town itself, just because of the topography and the soils here. Then, then it can only be what it can be. But if we at least allow the open zoning, the open opportunities for it to be there. Then somebody can have something to work with and be creative with, you know, to present. So, does that give you more feedback? To go on?
Yeah, absolutely.
We're in a meeting again on the twenty-seven, uh, staff meeting again.
Okay.
Um, and did you wanna formally request that he look at a District Six, if you will, in the compliance model?
Sure.
Okay, Jonathan?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, it would be, um. Close to the original, uh, proposed area that, um, Mike Crowley originally proposed for the interim, uh, compliance. Uh, so there's absolutely no issues with, uh, continuing to explore that further. Uh, especially along the lines of, um, of, of mixed use, um, uh, MBTA zone.
Okay, wonderful.
So, if we. Alright, so now we have another option to look at. Um, the thing that's great is District Three and District Four, and the new one we're, we're considering here. Are all, um, in the same section of town, um, and. Um, if we can do more with this existing commercial area that we already have. Um, the other wholesome part of this is that we don't have to disrupt a lot of native virgin land. Um, to make this happen. Um, so, I mean, I think District Three and Four. Plus this other proposed district that we're considering now. Um, will provide a lot of options for any developers to work with. And I like the idea of creating a sense of community down there. Rather than a subdivision or just a housing, you know, residential landscape. Um, I, I, um, I, I think we're onto something.
Okay. Okay, so while, and, and maybe this is not the right place for me to ask the question, cause I was trying to find. Alicia's letter.
Who's the letter?
From the historic. Did, didn't you write a letter?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, there is.
Where was it? I didn't see it.
Three point one, where is that? Do we have a letter or just a request?
Or Alyssa will be here in person, is that?
Yeah.
The, I thought they had a request to be here.
To have a conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I just wanna say that I totally agree with having the historic district on the maps.
On the, so you know what, like, what I'm wanting to do.
Yeah.
It was, um, Beth and I watched this seminar about historic preservation.
Yeah.
In the three A MBTA community, fascinating webinar. Um, so the conversation came up and said. If, can we have a historic districts overlay on our town zoning map?
Right.
And so she said, this would be the place to bring.
Correct, correct, and I.
I don't know the process of that.
What the process would be, when we create an overlay district, okay? Then within that district, we tell any developers the things that are allowed and how they can be done. Alright, so the developer looking at an area of town would know exactly where he could build this. And what the requirements would be to build it, and that's where the historic element would come in. And this planning board already has discussed some of those elements, which means to encourage a village atmosphere. Uh, to try to maintain the character.
Okay.
And to preserve a scenic way, okay? So, all of that, you see, will be coming when we go to the town meeting. Because that'll all be part of the zoning bylaw package.
So Jonathan, what I, we were looking for is to get, uh, I understand what you're saying. And, uh, so it, it, and is to get the overlay created with the town zoning map. And what I, our, we've been working diligently for two years to get. More information out to the town of where the historic districts are. So if you go to our webpage, we made brand changes to our webpage. There's more visible maps that show the street address. We modified the Central Mass Realtors Association has been given the street listings. So that hopefully the Realtors know that.
They didn't tell me that.
When they're, we didn't, anyway, it's a more visibility of the historic.
Absolutely.
So when, when a project like this, say, in a Realtor or even another town board. We were in, boom, pull up the zoning map, there's the historic districts, it's more visibility.
Right, Jonathan, is that something that you can do in this process? To make sure that our his, historic districts are marked as well?
Um, I can check with GIS, um, about, about the feasibility of incorporating that. Into, uh, these, these, uh, non-feasible feasible area maps. Um, I don't want to say for sure, because, um. I, I don't wanna give them some, uh, uh, I, I don't wanna give out, uh, an answer that. I'm, I'm not sure they, uh, they might not necessarily have the, um, uh, the time to, to.
Yeah, but.
Just a minute. Alyssa, town, like, us and you, how do we, how would we go about getting that?
Send all of your information to Beth.
And it's right on the webpage.
Okay, and, and we'll get that to Jonathan.
Okay.
So you will have all the information, you're not gonna have to research it, it's gonna come out of our historic commission.
Okay, um, uh, yeah, in that case, um, uh, absolutely, send, uh, send the information our way. And we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Does that create the overlay on our, our, the town of Townsend zoning map?
Uh, the maps will all get updated, so while we're doing this district thing, we'll get the historic thing on.
Excellent.
Jonathan.
God willing, if they said, say yes, but I think we can work something out.
Oh, thank you so much for your time.
Jonathan, is it possible that we can get a digital copy of this, so we can play with it here too?
Uh, of the map or of the compliance model, or both, I can send you both, that's not a problem.
You already have it.
We have it, we have a digital one?
Yes, we have a digital, it was in your, uh, your SharePoint folder.
Alright, thank you.
Yes. Um, oh, you mean, you mean the current one, not the, not, uh, the, the. Uh, okay, so when, uh, when we, uh, uh, create the new district, we'll update the map to reflect that. And we'll also pass that along at that point in time as well.
Beth will get it and she'll get it to us.
Alright, perfect.
Well, I really think we made a lot of progress.
Yeah, so, um. We'll just, we'll make sure that you have all the information that regarding the historic districts, so that no research has to be done. It only has to be planted on the new maps, let's say, okay?
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you wanted to discuss?
Um, not at this point in time, we're still exploring, uh, parcels. Um, we might, uh, start be, uh, beginning to bring up, uh, dimensional, uh, requirements. In terms of just, um, suggestions, uh, from the, from, uh, town staff at the, uh, next workshop. Uh, just to, uh, get a better idea, um, but, uh. That, that, that will be something we cover, uh, June, um, June twenty-sixth.
Wait, can you explain exactly what you're asking here?
Um, so as part of the, um, compliance modeling, um. In the, uh, model itself, um, there is a checklist of, uh, parameters for each district. For dimensional requirements. Uh, that allow you to more closely tailor, uh, each individual district. Uh, in terms of, um, height allowance, uh, minimum lot size.
I understand.
Um, uh, building height, uh, if you're, if you're, uh, planning for a three family or four family. Um, uh, the floor area ratio, uh, so those are all things that you can take into consideration. With the development of, uh, the, of each district as, as you go along in model.
Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you very much, Jonathan.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, thank you for, uh, thank you for having me.
Yep, look forward to the next report.
I shall, thank you.
Have a, have a good night.
You too, bye-bye. Okay, so, next, I, we could briefly. Go to two point five. And I'll say briefly, I don't know, um, if it's okay with you, should, that I go out of order. Okay?
Okay, bye-bye.
Alright, I have not really reviewed this, but I had it put on the agenda. And, uh, I don't know if the two of you had seen the Board of Selectments meeting where, um. A member of the public, and I didn't go back and look at, I, I, I saw the meeting, but I didn't go back and re-look at it. Um, after, I believe the, um, building, uh, building commissioner has resigned.
He is?
Yeah.
He resigned?
Yes.
Thursday, Thursday.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. So, um, part of, so, uh, this may have been part of the impetus. Um, and that is that this one forty-five dash fifty-two outdoor lighting, um, bylaw. Which is these two pages, okay? Um, was not being enforced, and the person who brought it up. Just ended up pointing out all the lights, I guess, in town that he didn't like. You know, did, he didn't feel complied with, um, with the bylaw. So, which makes me only think that, you know, we have a lot of bylaws. And you need a lot of permits here to do this, that, or the other thing, and the enforcement officer is the, the building commissioner.
No wonder why he resigned.
So, um, we need to, I, I guess why I'm bringing this up is we need to look at. And I know it's, it, it, it's, the answer is no in a lot of instances. Are we really being reasonable with what our bylaws are? Are they really what's going on? You know, because we generally have things that we're addressing, that we're reacting to. Rather than being proactive, like the master plan and, and, and making the edits and, you know, whatever. Because we have, when the big projects come or we have public hearings, that takes up most of our time. So a lot of this bull goes by the wayside. So I bring this to your attention, because if possible, I would, like you. And, and myself, I will as well, it's only like a page and a half, review this and see what should be edited. On this bylaw.
So is this like, is this mostly commercial, or is this what it's?
Well, you have to read it, I don't think that it's, I don't think it's clear.
Yeah, that's probably our pair.
So, oh yeah, I don't think it's been, well, I don't know, how can we tell? Okay, nineteen.
Do we really need one?
Nineteen ninety-seven is when it was, looks like it was added. It may not even have existed before nineteen ninety-seven, and it has not been edited since. Am I correct, Beth, in saying that? Yeah.
Why do we need it?
Well, why don't we read it first, okay? And then come back and discuss it at the next meeting.
I could see, I mean, like where I am, there were no streetlights, we don't really have any light, lighting where I am.
We used to have lighting in town, but they got rid of the lighting because it cost too much money.
Well, yeah, but the other thing is, I mean, if you lived in a dense area and your neighbors have this. Bright spotlights all around their houses.
Yeah, I have one near me.
Into your window, it can be quite annoying, and, um, so I, I can see. What is a need, need for it.
What I'd like you to do is, I'm gonna do this too, because I just remember, I don't remember everything that the guy said. What was the date of that meeting? Did you find it or was?
Uh, I did put it in my SharePoint folder, it was May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Did he have a specific example? Oh, yeah.
Okay, but, um, this, this is for private, if you look at, um, Section C regulations.
Did you say May sixteenth or fifteenth?
Uh, I thought it was the sixteenth.
Okay, that's how I know. Okay, um. I want, what I wanted to do tonight was I wanted to finish up the last one that we were on for our work session. But I wanted to bring this to your attention, and I think it's important to go to that YouTube of the meeting.
Okay.
And go to that section and listen to what he had to say, and then look at our bylaw.
Okay.
It's the only way I can think of to address it.
Okay.
Well, the bylaw just defines everything, but it doesn't really say much.
But let, listen to what he had to say, and what's his complaint, then let's address.
Okay.
What we think should be clarified in the bylaw.
Yeah, that's fair.
You know, I, I really don't wanna make life.
Hard.
Hard for, for others, but if somebody has taken the time to make this complaint, sent it to Board of. Has taken the time to make this complaint, sent it to Board of Selectments meeting, because not many people do, um. Let's look at it since it relates to a bylaw. Okay, so thank you, guys. Next meeting that will be on the agenda.
Okay.
Um. I'm not gonna, if it's okay with you, I'm not gonna do, um. Uh. This. We are going to do two-point-two and that's finish up one-seventy-five dash ten. Um, on page six is where we, well, we were done with page six. We were on page seven, so I do want to do that. And we won't do, uh, master plan tonight. Two-point-four or, and two-point-five is being moved. And. Uh, so before we get into the, the meat thing here, three-point-three highway department, uh, any, uh. Highway department motor special safety road signs, man's brought. What, what is that?
That's just an update. Um, the state had, um, has issued, uh. Signs for towns and basically, I thought they were in the packets, but we can, I'm not certain. The highway superintendent selected sightings on different roads. Everything you're happening, but they are basically safety signs for on passing bikes.
Okay.
It's a law that they require four feet, um, when you pass bikes. So it's a list of anticipated locations for different streets to there. Um, and so it's informational for the board. It's just something going on in, uh, the town.
So that's a law, four feet? Sometimes that's not possible.
All right.
I know.
That's this one here, three-point-three.
You, you know. Are, are we talking about?
This is informational only. Okay, and, and so you can read it. We can't do anything about it. It's a state mandate, so it's for our information. Okay, we get, we have our things we got to talk about.
Who enforces it?
Yeah, who enforces that?
Really?
The local police.
Oh, the police. Okay.
Yeah, sure.
All right.
And that was a ruling that came by the state and it's the local that's going to enforce it.
I want to know if there's a law for single bike riding rather than three abreast bike racing.
Oh, it's terrible. They're enough to cause accidents, in my opinion.
We're going to stop for.
Three-point-four, okay, so three-point-four, I'm just bringing this to your attention. It's, um. The.
I printed out.
Yeah, I see it here. Conservation Commission Regulations Change Approval. Change approval. So that means that this is a, uh, if somebody wants to make a change, this is the.
Okay, I must have wrote that wrong. But the Conservation Commission has already informed these changes. So they are in, uh, they will be in the code, but it's updated.
Okay, okay, just like when we make edits, this does not go to the town. Meeting.
Correct.
This is just like their policy now is this and this is the law.
Correct, and, and this is the notification of that.
Yeah.
They did have the public hearing, um, which the board, I, at, at another meeting, I had distributed this to the board.
Okay.
Something like a comment, so, um, that's one thing I want to double check on, uh, the regulations that the planning board is directing on. Just to make sure the meeting needs to do, uh, a public hearing, so I'll, I'll confirm that.
On our, on our edits?
Yeah, and my, it's my understanding that we don't, but.
Okay, but we're not done yet either.
Exactly.
On this one, and then you can submit it to whoever.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's done.
Okay. E-FAS water treatment plant stormwater, is there an update on this?
Yeah, pick up me, um, they have planned out clearing at the site. The tree clearing is done. Um, myself, uh, Jessica and Matt from the Land Department did an initial stormwater permit, um, site visit, reconstruction visit. Everything looks good, everything's in order, um, and they're, uh, they're ready to go. So, yeah, they'll be contacting us when they create the, uh, stormwater infrastructure. So the basins and the sediment bore bays and all that, so.
They could see the trucks going, going in and out of there. So I hear they were doing something.
They recorded their decisions. They've, um, they had their general permit from NFTs. We had a copy of that, so the file was started, so.
Okay, and, and to that or kind of like that, Country States has not done any, I mean, they're recorded.
Yeah.
But there's no, they don't have their loan yet. They don't, there's no, nothing will start until they get their loan and they have a process. There's, they're getting updated bids because it's been two years.
Oh.
So, and it'll probably be Dillis that will be handling the stormwater part.
Oh, great, okay.
You know, we won't have to go, uh. We'll just pay them, we'll just pay them.
Yeah.
To, when I say will, but the, the complex is going to pay them. So that's the update. Nothing yet, so nothing to report.
Awesome, okay.
Um, and then three-point-six. M-A-P-C webinar. So that's not MRPC.
That's not, M-A-P-C is the Boston Planning Commission, so that's a big one. Um, and a lot of the information, they, um, invite, it's free webinar, so. Other plant, uh, members of communities and other planning commissions can attend them online. So. You heard Alyssa talk about this one. This is the one that we saw.
For the Historic Preservation?
Yes, the Historic Preservation, exactly. I got called away in the middle of the presentation, but Alyssa heard the whole thing. And she told me that the reporting would be available and she highly recommends it. So as soon as I get that.
You'll link it to us?
I'll do the report, yeah.
Okay, awesome. That'll be good to see. Same thing, um, on the MBTA Communities. Virtual update, is that, um.
Which one's that?
It's right after Historic Preservation. There's two things. It says, and three-A MBTA Communities.
Yes, that is, um, that is the same thing. That's the title of the webinar, Historic Preservation and Free-A.
Oh, that's one webinar.
Yeah.
Okay, I took it to be two, okay. Um. And then I am still, let's see. Three-point-seven, announce the planning board vacancy. Yes, we still have a vacancy on the planning board and no volunteer forms yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so anybody who's interested in all this stuff we're doing, um. It's not dull.
No.
So we can use anyone who's interested in the planning of our community.
I'll buy you coffee and donuts for a week.
Okay, three-point-eight correspondence, looks to be a lot from Shirley.
Yes, there's a lot.
And do you just want to, do you want to do this, Robert? Just want to announce who it was, the date and, and the decision? Because we don't have a summary.
Uh, there's a legal notice down in Shirley. Uh, site plan review. Um, pretty much. That's just the legal notice there. Uh, notice of decision, the planning board, special affirmative application of. Serena have a fifty-two year old road, Shirley. Um, a coffee shop. Um, we're going to have a public hearing. Um. Anybody wants to attend, six o'clock. Oh, this is old news, um, April twelve. Um, town of Grotten Planning Board, uh, public hearing notice. Uh, the town of, uh, Overlay District, some of the last special permit and site plan review. Um, we're going to have a Zoom meeting on Thursday, June twenty-second. At seven P.M. Um. For a special permit, site plan review for six residential apartment units, relocate an existing building, eleven-roll road. Also known as Waters House. Uh, subject property is on, on the town overlay district. Um. And we have a notice of decision, kind of Ashby, eleven Ingleson Road. Uh, decision by the board is to grant special term expansion of a non-conforming structure. For property twelve Ingleson Road. Decision is filed by the town clerk. Doesn't say much about it, just a, uh.
Does it say they granted it?
Um, decision is to grant. They granted it.
Oh, okay.
Um. Planning Board Legal Adver- Advertisement. Six P.M., Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, Town Office Building, seven Key Way, Shirley. Applicant submitted by Anthony Library. Uh, request public here, special permit. Uh, the lot is being designed for a single-family home. Uh, the posses located on Thero Townsend Road. Uh, and the resident, rural residential district, stop the application and be attained. Uh, town of Pepperell, public hearing with the planning board. Um. On June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, six o'clock. Uh, major site plan review and land dis- disturbance permit. For proposed research and development facility. Containing business offices and studios for taking automotive repair videos. The applicant is Melissa Robbins. Um, so that hearing is going to be scheduled on the June twentieth. Uh, town of Pepperell Planning Board. Uh, same subject, uh, I just read this wrong. No, this is a different one. Uh, same hearing date at six o'clock. Six-thirty, June twentieth, six o'clock. Uh. For a special permit to allow construction of single-family residence on a lot containing less than eighty thousand square feet. The applicant is Ian Anzil, on behalf of Stephen Murphy, owner. Uh, subject property of game fifty, Baguerry Street. Uh, the town of Pepperell. The same date, October, uh, June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, six o'clock. Uh, special permit, oh, I just read that one, okay.
These are all, um, in our portals, right?
Right. Uh, zoning board of appeals, town of Grotten. Zoning Board of Appeals, a whole public hearing Wednesday, June fourteenth. Uh, twenty-twenty-three, three, six-thirty at the Grotten Town Hall, second floor meeting room. Application of heritage blending LLC for comprehensive permit to allow the construction of. Forty units of housing in the master lots, chapter forty-B. Pursuant to chapter three thirty-eight of the town code. The proposed project is a parcel number, whatever, uh, Cowbon Brook Road in Grotten. Uh, it's forty units. Um, number one decision, notice. Notice of decision of planning board for site plan review, this is a decision. Um. Or you, this was. This was done on April twelfth. Oh, our public hearing was, well, continued to make again. Um. I don't know. They were going to have a, that's just a notice of a public hearing that they were going to have, that I already read. Um.
This is zoning, this, Beth, this one on, um. What's going to the zoning board of?
And here it is again, the same applicant. I think it's a duplicate.
That's this week. Can, can you find out what happens to that one?
Sure.
That's a zoning board. Apparently the, it must have been denied. And then it, it's going to zoning. This is the one for forty, a forty-B, forty units.
Yeah, and Grotten, right?
Yeah, so it, it could be interesting for us to, um. Understand what's going on there.
Yeah.
There's a legal advertisement for June twenty-eighth. This is the town of Shirley. Um. The, uh. A hearing for a second review. Um, protected zoning bylaws, special permit. Uh, for the construction of a telecommunications facility. Posses located off Center Street, off Center Road. Uh, so ID twenty-one A nineteen, uh, in a residential one district.
Looks like towns are busy here lately.
That's it.
Thank you, Robert. Um, what I didn't bring up was three-point-two.
Three-point-two.
Three-point-two, and that was, I don't know if you guys have gotten it, but I got four emails today alone. That repeated this information to me.
Yeah, I did too.
Okay, so Thursday, June twenty-second. I will not be here. This is apparently in person.
Now, it's, it's remote and in person.
At the same time, it's a band concert, for God's sake.
If I may, uh.
Six P.M. It's an hour and a half.
Concert at seven-thirty.
Yeah.
Well, I'm the chairperson.
You're the chairperson?
Yeah. Did you do that? Yeah. So I kind of have to go.
I guess so.
Okay, so the public, so the public comment period is starts June fifteenth at four P.M. Which you would have to write in or email in, right? Meaning, and then. And. So, did they send a link with it?
Yeah, it's, well, the way it's coming together, this is a, another grant with, um, M-MRPC.
Okay.
So Jeffrey Liberos is working with Open Space Committee. And I've just been helping because, um, like, when he left, was doing a lot of the organizing, so. I'll let Carol tell you more about how it's gonna, how it's gonna go, because she's the chair.
Oh, my.
Yeah. Cause the present, he's going to do a presentation. We've been working on updating the, uh, plan. Because we got to get it done so we can apply for grants.
Okay.
I know. Veronica, Ronnie, Kelly, she's so funny. She, she says, before I die, I want a swimming pool right behind the senior center. Yeah, yeah, uh, uh, an enclosed recreation, a recreation center with this swimming pool.
Oh, boy.
That's good. Yeah, I think.
Who's going to pay for that?
It's, we're going to get grants. That's why we got to get the plan done. So we got to, the plan approved.
Okay.
But don't worry, there, there's big plans. I mean, the big, big topic is that recreation center. They want a huge recreation center, which is a good idea.
Yeah.
Because the kids need something.
Behind the senior center.
Well, no, Ronnie, I'm not sure about the, the, the swimming pool. Swimming pool, please. She said she wants behind this. The rec center. Is going to be, I don't know where, where, where are they gonna, I guess I'm going to find land for that, but. Um, yeah, that, but they have done, um, from what I understand, they completed a boat launch for canoes and kayaks. And I guess it's behind the church.
Yeah.
Yeah, church there. Um. I forget what else. So, yeah, we have.
It's going to be on our calendar.
For a lot of, um, recreation stuff they found and they got it, we're going to mark the, um, the corridors for habitat. Uh, that's part of the plan is to protect the habitat corridors. It had them marked, so they're working on that. Um.
Anybody here but, or?
Well, yeah, they did a, they did a huge survey and all of this is based on survey results. So I think he's going to give part of the surveying results. Um, at the meeting.
Oh, good, I've informed.
I believe so. So the task for the planning board is, um, to, when the draft is released. Uh, Jeff from MRPC would like you each to read it and, um, come up with some comments. And a review letter, an official review letter, a winner, an example of what, uh, what's been done in the past.
Is this for, for the grant application?
No, this is for the open space and recreation plan draft that is going to be released on the fifteenth, this Thursday. So once it's downloaded, uploaded, sorry, to the website, I'm going to send all of you the link. And, um, you can review the document and then at the next meeting, um, the twenty-sixth. You could, um, come up with some comments, suggestions, things that you think might be improved on the plan. Things that you think were already great in the plan, what have you.
So it's also going to be what, what the Conservation Board and the Board of Selectmen would have.
Yes, um, that's right. So the Board of Selectmen is going to do the same thing.
Yes, um, that's right, so the board of selection's gonna do the same thing, conservation commission, any board, I mean, all, the more the better. You know, you want it to go through that thorough review. Um, so you're gonna be a reviewer for that plan. But how, do you want me to help coordinate that, the rest of the committees for that review? Would you like me to try to send something out like I do for mandatory referrals?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not even sure, yes, I gotta talk to Jeff Thursday, uh, the next meeting, I'm not sure what year we are after. After the public forum, where we go from there.
Something.
I figured that out, that's my next job.
So it doesn't sound very better, so we can.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, so that leaves us. With. Uh, continuing two point two. Page seven. And that's what I have, I actually brought my worksheet from the last time. So I know that that's where we left off.
So what, what number was it again, one seventy-five what?
One seventy-five, well, it should be two point two in your packet.
Oh, okay.
Unless you have it from last time, it is one seventy-five dash nine.
One seventy-five dash nine, I think that was pretty much.
We left off at, uh.
Page.
Page seven.
Seven, yeah.
At one seventy-five dash eleven, procedures for A and R applications. The last thing we did was increase the fees in. Uh, number two above it. We went to three hundred from one hundred and fifty to one fifty, I don't know.
Um, and, um, I'm very kind of, I made a little bit of a, an error. Um, when the board originally worked on this, it was August eighth of twenty-two, and I looked back and looked. And we had actually stopped, um. At one point to do a public hearing, and then it was never picked up again. So in the packets that I printed out for you, there's just a few more definitions and sections that have to be reviewed, um. So I hate to have you go back, but I, I did print it out for you, and I started a complete. Um, edit sheet, and we're like, uh, proposed change.
So are these. These, these gray, um, parts are things that have, we already did in August of when?
No, uh, what happened is I, I created a tree. The part, the things that were covered, it says, you know, we had covered, you had covered those first few pages, and then you stopped at this definition, O S M D. And you started a public hearing, and then we never, it never resumed to the next definition. So, um, unfortunately, if you wouldn't mind going through those, at least I could, you know, catch up to where you left off, um, last time. I started right in on.
Yeah, but I thought at the last meeting, that, when was the last time we did this worksheet?
Well, recently, it was at the last planning board meeting, but I started the whole process back in August of two thousand twenty-two. And then it just got deferred and deferred and deferred to every next meeting. And I noticed when I went back and watched the recording. That we, at the end of this definition, you broke for a public hearing. And didn't come back to finish that, and that was just something that I didn't catch, so when we started again. I started right into one seventy-five section, or, uh, dash nine. So this area that's been highlighted, and it didn't come out on the print, we're sorry about that, but the area that's been highlighted. Was never reviewed, so it's not a lot, but it's just some, a few things that are highlighted there.
Never reviewed then, but was it reviewed last meeting?
Never. So what I'm saying is, we missed a section, because you went to a public hearing, and then I didn't. Get you back on track.
Yeah, but I'm trying to find it in what we did review last month. Um, last meeting, um.
It may, may not.
Seventy-five eight. I, I start at one seventy-five nine.
Exactly, and this is from a year ago, almost, when you started at the very beginning of the regulations.
So we must have missed that section?
Exactly, you missed a couple of sections that, under the definition. You were working on, um, definitions, one seventy-five dash eight. And you had to break for a public hearing, and so you finished O S M D.
And I guess we thought when we started this last time, cause I've got my packet. It was one seventy-five dash nine.
Right, so there was a short section that's highlighted here.
That wasn't.
That wasn't discussed.
Okay, so, having said that. Um. So O S P G is open space preservation development as defined by the applicable provisions. Of the Townsend bylaws, parcel. A property that does not conform to the Townsend zoning bylaws requirements for a structure or use. That's the definition of parcel?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we had that excerpt from one of the applicants.
Perimeter plan, a plan that shows no changes in any existing property boundaries. That's the definition of a perimeter plan. Okay?
Yeah.
Regularly scheduled meeting. A meeting scheduled to occur on a monthly basis, generally on the same day of the week, and. Same week of the month, this will include rescheduled dates for such meetings. Example, when the regularly scheduled meeting would fall. On a state holiday, but does not include additional meetings scheduled as a result. Of extra workload or for specific purposes, even. If such additional meeting occurs. On the same day of the week as a regularly scheduled meeting. But this is. What?
I, I don't see anything to change it, reading this whole section.
I feel like I'm in kindergarten. Residential subdivision, a subdivision which is entirely contained within residential zoning districts. Smaller scale. Refers to a map scale that is smaller than some other map scale. For example, a scale of one inch equals two thousand feet. One, whatever, the two thousand, is a smaller scale than a scale of one inch equals one hundred feet. Okay. You good with that?
Well, it depends what the project is and how big it is, so. In order to describe it on a piece of paper, they have to change the scale.
All right, and that's something that an engineer should know, who's ever gonna be.
No, so there's nothing wrong with this.
Okay. Fine, that's why I'm asking you.
Okay.
Subdivision, the division of a tract of land into two or more lots in such manner as to require provision for one. Or more new ways not in existence. When the subdivision control law became effective in the town of Townsend. To furnish access for vehicular traffic to one or more such lots, and shall include. A, or territ.
Re.
I need, I need to, this is, I tried without them. And shall include re-subdivision, and when appropriate, to the context shall relate to the process. Of subdivision. Or the land or territory subdivided, or any other division or plan of land. That is a subdivision under the subdivision control law.
I, I have a problem with, what's a re-subdivision? What? What?
Well, they're gonna re-subdivide.
Really, can you do that, or?
What do you mean, re?
No, I mean, it says if.
Sean, who, re-subdivision.
To furnish access and shall include re-subdivision and, oh. Well, if you have to include access. Will that change the subdivision, making it a re-subdivision?
Wouldn't you already have the access we need to develop the subdivision?
I don't care, why would you do a re-subdivision again?
That doesn't make sense.
It's either a subdivision or not, right?
Yeah.
Well, this, but, but it's precluded with the. The division of a tract of land into two or more lots in such a manner as to require provision for one or more new ways. Not in ex, not in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the town of Townsend. When was that?
Well, they're talking about situations before we had subdivision control.
Right, okay, so. To furnish access for the vehicular traffic to one or more of such lots. And shall include re-subdivision, and when appropriate. To the context shall relate to the process of subdivision, or to the land or territory subdivided. Or any other division or plan of land that is a subdivision under the subdivision control law.
Okay, so, if we think of. A subdivision, quote unquote, whatever that was, before the town had subdivision control. This is a clause, so that can be altered, the original pre-subdivision control.
Yeah, okay.
That's what that's all about.
Oh.
And does that make sense to you, the way it's written?
I can see where there could be instances.
Okay.
Very good.
And subdivision control law, and then it's just has a mass chapter law and through whatever.
Right.
Is that a correct way for that to be?
Right.
Okay. What land? Cause this is not my expertise right here. What land, any area defined as what land by either mass general law or Townsend laws, well, that's kinda simple, if somebody wants to know the definition of that, they have to go back to those two things.
Right.
Should we also add a federal law in there?
Okay, that's a, that's a good idea.
I don't know.
Well.
Well, we might be under that federal law, but they would probably follow, they would follow federal law, state law has to follow federal law.
Okay, so it's, it's assumed, yeah.
She would know, she worked for the federal.
Yeah, it's cause I know federal law.
Okay, there you go.
It was the federal law.
Zoning Act, Mass General Law forty A.
Yeah, certain.
An old law that was.
Okay, and then the board resumed review of chapter one seventy-five on May twenty-second, okay, so.
Did all that, yeah. I love that.
Okay, so now that we've, we've read and reviewed. That part is now done.
Yeah.
Okay. So at this point, I'm hoping I can get back to my thing, which is. Which now we have to go to. One seventy-five eleven. One seventy-five nine. And what happened? One seventy-five eight?
No, I printed out, um.
Well, I'm looking at your second page, and now I'm trying to find where we left off. Which was one seventy-five dash eleven.
Exactly, so if you look at the printout that I gave you, I've said, I put a sentence in, this is where the board adjourns.
Yeah.
And I'm five twenty-two, and right below it is one seventy-five eleven, procedures for A and R application, and that's where you.
One seventy-five nine.
One seventy-five dash nine, general provisions.
You already done that.
But that's what's on the sheet that, that you have.
Okay, so the sheet that I handed out to you. After the section that you just reviewed.
Mm-hmm.
It says the board is to review, affect the one seventy-five on May twenty-second.
Yeah.
And then you had already reviewed one seventy-five nine.
Okay, yeah.
Continuing all the way to. You did one seventy-five ten, and then you continued all the way to one seventy-five eleven, procedures for A and R application. And I wrote explicitly, this is where the board adjourned the discussion on five twenty-two, twenty-three, right above it.
Okay, I see. I'm looking for it, okay.
And then.
Yeah, okay.
And now I'm writing.
And I see that you have made the changes, well, I only noticed the one above, but.
Yeah, so on one, this is a lot easier to see, because we can see the colors and.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So with that highlighted, North American vertical datum?
That's right here is where we're going.
And I have not given, um, you had asked for a question on that, and I didn't, I wasn't able to find it yet, so I'm still working on.
I'm, I'm sorry, which, uh. I didn't, can I see what you have there? Oh, I see. Number ten, the North American vertical daddy of nineteen eighty-eight, and I had a question there.
Oh, there was a question, and we haven't resolved it yet.
Okay, so that's why the highlight's there.
Yeah, so that's just a reminder.
All right, so we're on number ten, is that right?
No.
You are on the very near south.
Right here, in the package she gave us.
One seventy-five eleven A.
Okay, got it.
So request for A and R endorsement. I'll do this page, and you can pass on after, okay? Um. Request for A and R, okay, one, any person who wishes to cause to be recorded in the registry of deeds. Or to be filed with the land court, a plan of land. And who believes that this plan does not require approval under subdivision control. Law may submit a request for A and R endorsement containing the following. Everybody good with that? A, the original plan conforming to the requirements of the registry of deeds or land court. As appropriate and conforming to the requirements of the planning board as specified. In one seventy-five dash ten D, in subsection C of this section. B, seven full-size prints of the plan. Uh, that was B. C, a copy of the D to all parcels affected by the plan. D, a completed form A and R dash one, including all required supplemental forms. E, the required fee as specified in subsection B below. F, the necessary evidence to show that the plan does not require approval under a subdivision control law. Amended eleven six, two thousand and six. Okay? Two, this request shall be submitted to the planning board in accordance with all requirements of one seventy-five dash ten. That all look right? Doesn't sound as reasonable. Um. Uh, Robert, do you wanna take half the next page?
Okay. Property shown as remaining land or similar property can have no special status. They shall. We know.
Don't be, so.
Don't be included.
Don't be what?
Included in all fee calculations, so have, I took the paper out.
B, fees for A and R endorsement, all other A and R parties required for application. Here's seventy-five, point seventy-five.
For each lot.
For each lot.
Why don't you finish the paragraph, and then we'll go back to see if that's.
I think that these, these probably have to be adjusted.
Yeah, right, but, but go to the end, because it says, we'll play a total of.
Free plot or parcels over on the plan, excluding lots and parcels that are unaffected by the endorsement. But. Including lots and parcels that are intended recipients of a conveyance. For example, a plan that. Um.
There was a parcel.
There was a parcel, I, half an acre act being removed. From a fifty-acre property with the intent of conveying an immediate quantity. Will pay a total of as follows.
Oh, okay.
So we need to look at the fees of them.
Well, the seventy-five dollar fee is fine. And the seventy-five dollar fee is good, and what's the other fee?
I don't know, I, I, I'm thinking we have to adjust that.
Right.
I, I don't know to what, but just, just because of time.
Only because I have the notes from when we adjusted all the fees, we didn't change this A and R seventy-dollar fee.
What did we?
What was that for?
What is your note?
Plans, no.
Because the subdivision approval not required, it was seventy-five dollars and we didn't change it.
What, what number is that under?
I was looking at my notes, remember when we went through all the fees?
Right.
This is on my notes from all the fees.
I think we have to change that.
And we decided we had to change it, seventy-five dollars.
Why? What date was that?
I mean, that's, I, I, I updated all the forms based on what we.
I remember that meeting.
Yeah, I remember that meeting.
So, are we saying it's the same fee?
But we changed the fees on the.
We changed some of the fees.
Yeah, we, well, under uh, one seventy-five ten F, rejection incomplete applications, if an incomplete application is some, resubmitted within six weeks, forty-two to whatever, uh, such for subdivision applications, then it may include a request for waiver of a portion of the new fees. Such waiver will be granted solely at the discretion of the board and in no case will be, will the reapplication fee be waived to less than one fifty for A and R applications or less than three hundred for a subdivision.
That's what we did.
So, and maybe it does have to go to a meeting vote, is that what you're saying?
That is what we did at pool.
No, I think she's just.
We haven't voted on anything yet, but what you're doing is reviewing and making proposed changes. And what I'm asking is, Carol, did you say that some were not, were not allowed to update that?
Uh, which ones were we not, where are in my notes? That, that some of them said we couldn't, what's, oh.
We can't change certain things.
Certain things we couldn't change without going to the board.
And then what's regarding the permitting, perimeter?
Yeah, I noticed on that, let me see. Um, let's see, scenic road subdivision. Oh, okay, A and R subdivision, covered in Regulation one seventy-four dash eleven B can be changed by planning board vote.
It can?
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
So currently with seventy-five dollars and we kept it seventy-five dollars, and then, oh no, maybe it was proposed. Oh, maybe, maybe I missed that. It says a hundred plus two fifty for new lot. Okay, maybe I messed, maybe I messed up.
Okay, that is surprising. Honestly. I would feel really surprised. Yeah, but you could have, because I, 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 I think that we.
Currently, yeah, I guess I must have messed up on that. I might have to relook at the form that I sent you. Planning board, planning board, the scenic road can only be changed by town meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, yeah, so maybe I need to go back. I will take.
Because this, this goes.
It's okay, because it hasn't gone in the code yet.
All right.
So, you're, you're saying that, that, that you already, the board already approved a higher rate?
Yeah, because here it says, oh, recommendations for the planning board by the work group, so.
Okay.
It does say currently it's for the A and R subdivision, it's currently seventy-five dollars plus seventy-five dollars per new lot, and is proposed to be a hundred dollars plus two hundred and fifty dollars per new lot.
Okay.
So, okay, so I will.
And that makes sense considering things today.
So, I will have to go back and relook at those forms I sent you back, because I guess I did look at my thing very well.
With the intent of conveying it to, uh, neighboring property, will pay a total of three hundred. That's a different thing.
The application fee is a hundred, and each lot is two hundred?
Two fifty.
That's a big jump from seventy-five though, right?
Yeah, but so isn't the value of the lot.
Yeah.
No, I, I, you know, and, and honestly, Beth, with all the time that's spent, town staff time that's spent.
You're right.
It's got to be covered, and they're going to get the money back, you know, so we have to think about the relation of it.
There's not one of these that ever goes. We always have continuances and continuances.
Yeah, and I think that three hundred should be five hundred.
Sounds good.
In the last sentence.
Exactly, for example, plan to being enabled.
Because it's conveying. Somebody's making money.
So, what does that three hundred come under?
It's the, it's, um, with the intent of con- okay, so, if, if it, like he said, if a half acre comes out of a fifty-acre parcel with the intent of conveying it to a neighbor.
Okay.
Okay, we'll pay a total of, let's say, five hundred as follows. Oh, five, a total of five hundred as follows. Oops, we might have to wait a minute there, because, one, seventy-five dollars a base fee, well, that's changed.
So, it should be a hundred.
Right. Two, seventy-five dollars for the fifty acre, now forty-nine point five acre.
These are examples, right?
Yeah, but, yeah, so we, but, but.
Plus.
We have to put, we have to put reasonable numbers in here.
Okay.
So, we started at a hundred dollars for the application, right?
All right, but.
And how much for each lot now?
Okay, so, so the one he's keeping, this, in this example, the one he's keeping, let's have that at the two fifty. That's a large parcel. Then it says seventy-five dollars for the parcel being conveyed, that's got to be two fifty. You're conveying it, it's going to be two fifty. I mean, you can say what you want to say, but that's what I'm thinking, thinking about how deals are going today. Seventy-five dollars for the recipient of the property.
No, I think it has to be two fifty for every recip- every parcel, and then like, the application fee is one hundred, but all the parcels.
The parcels would be two fifty.
Yeah.
So, everything after that would be just two fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two fifty for each lot.
Yeah.
So, the total will be, uh,
And, but it's.
Six hundred instead of three hundred, right? So, the total for the example. Right?
That's what's required when you receive an application.
Six hundred, you're right.
No, I mean, how much time does it take?
Oh, how much time? Does it take a processor?
Yeah, when you, when you, somebody applies.
Yeah, it gives me a complete application. I know, I know, how much time it takes to be on.
They come in and this is what we want.
It's ours, and then if they're talking to her.
Right.
How long is that?
Right, so a hundred bucks is nothing.
No, it's, it can't be that anymore. So, but, so I, you're right, it's six hundred.
Six hundred.
In the bottom of the, okay, because that would be, uh, that would be for the example with these fees, okay? So then the, number one is a hundred, two is two fifty, three is two fifty, four is two fifty.
Okay, so is that six fifty?
So, that's.
Six fifty, you got it?
Eight fifty.
You know, wait, two, four, six.
Eight fifty.
Seven fifty plus a hundred is eight fifty.
Yeah, so forget that, six hundred is eight fifty.
Okay.
Requirements for A and R plans. Uh, okay, sorry, I didn't mean to take over here.
No, okay.
You're here.
I was getting confused, so.
Are, are you good now, though?
Yeah, now I'll have to go back and relook at the, the forms. I had updated forms, so I'll go back and get them, so that's fine.
I want you to know, I go through this all the time when I have to review management accounts. I'm like, and then I have to do it again. It makes sense to me one day and then the next day it doesn't, so. All right, you're, start over here with C, Robert.
Submitted by A and R endorsement shows the following. The title, a north point or arrow, date of the survey, a local map at a scale not greater than one inch equals two thousand feet.
Do you want to put or arrow after north point?
Uh, I guess the north.
Is that a clarification? I mean, I don't mind putting that in.
I don't know what the, the real legal.
Term is.
Term is. I always call it a north arrow. Whenever you want in my drawings, it's a north arrow. So, I never use the word north point.
Okay.
Maybe that's surveyor language or something I'm not accustomed to, but.
I can try to look online.
It should have a north arrow. Everybody knows what that means, right?
Yeah, you said a north arrow.
Everybody knows a north arrow. So, north point could be subject to the question.
Yeah.
Well, we could put north point arrow.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Well, I, if I, if I were in a situation where I wanted to challenge this.
Okay. And you're.
I, I would say, what do you mean, the north point of the lot, the north.
Exactly.
Right, so just have a north arrow on it, right?
What is this north arrow?
It's on the plans.
It's on the plans.
Yeah.
It's, it's on her checklist, and then she looks for it on the plan.
An arrow pointing to the north, maybe it should say.
North arrow, just one.
Or an arrow pointing to the north, okay?
All right.
All plans submitted, so the plan has to have, okay?
An arrow pointing to the north. And the C is data survey, that's fine. Locus map, that's fine too, that shows where in the continuity it is. The scale on the drawing, existing and proposed boundary lines.
Okay, so the locus map with a scale, a scale not greater than one inch, I understand what it is, but I'm just asking you, one inch equals two thousand feet, so is that?
No greater.
No, oh, no greater, so it could be lesser.
Right.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Uh, the scale's obvious. Proposed boundary lines clearly distinguish between the two. Areas and dimensions of a lot shown. Any lot or parcel with, which there is a body of water must show three numbers. The acreage in, exclusive of the body of the water, the acreage of the body of the water, and the combined acreage.
Okay.
Total frontage and its property. Any property frontage describes as a sequence of segments, meaning it's not a straight line, that's what that means.
Okay.
Then the total frontage must be shown in addition to the length of each segment.
Okay, so let me just say here, Beth, what we're reading now is everything she checks off on the application, right?
Yes.
So, I guess I, I would ask you, as we go through this, if you see something that has been a problem, or a question that comes up a lot, let us know, okay? Interject, and this would be the time to clarify it, if it would help, because she's the one going through the process with everybody, okay?
Sure, thank you.
Um, go ahead. Are you at zoning district?
Wait, can we just stop for a second?
Yeah.
Is there anywhere near that says this has to be a certified building?
We're not done yet. I don't know, Beth?
The zoning enforcement officer and AKA building commissioner, the positions combined, reviews every one of the A and R applications and site plans that come in. I make a personal, you know, appointment with the building commissioner. They review the whole site plan, points out anything that may be a problem, and I take note of that, and I usually go out and talk to the engineer and explain that.
Right, what I'm saying, in this bylaw right here, we're looking at, I don't see where specifically says it has to be prepared by a certified Massachusetts registered license certificate.
Because if you read, if you read earlier, it said that applications for approval of, um, are subject to one seventy-five ten, which is the earlier one that you went through, which said it must have a license.
I didn't see here, so it's a question.
Because here it says the date of the survey.
Okay.
So, the.
Yeah.
And so basically what we're looking at is everything needed for the application, but also what is needed on the survey.
The actual application is stamped and signed by the engineer. It's not accepted if it's not. And so the actual A and R application, including M site plan, and I actually run um, each engineer's number through the licenser board, so. But we did have a, a time in the past when a license.
It was an expired.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It happened, yes.
And that had to be corrected.
Yeah, yeah, we have, you know, over the top of the board, but it happens, you know, you forget, you know.
You're, you are at I, zoning district.
We did the, uh, front of the property.
Yes, we did.
Zoning district of each lot and parcel including applicable overlay ditches and all. There's only district boundaries, though lots and parcels affected by the plan are in the same zone, then this is a single notation survived. Lot and house numbers and/or house number for existing property. Sometimes they don't have the house numbers available yet.
Right.
You've noticed on sound, yeah.
Well, they get that from the building inspector, right?
It says lot and/or, so I guess that's still.
So, they could just put a house number on it, you know, on the plan and not.
Or a lot number.
Yeah.
Lot number suffices, but eventually there has to be a house number.
Right.
But not in the beginning for a permit.
For the A and R, yeah, the approval not required. Yeah, that one is, is not super clear, and I'm not sure, but you know, you always see a butters on the A and R plan, but a lot and or house number for the existing properties, yeah.
Well, I've seen a lot come through and they don't have.
That's a hard one to.
Right, they don't have, uh, house numbers on them.
Because most of the plans you see don't have existing properties on them.
Is that something?
But there's butters, but it, when you look at the plan, they're not going to show the neighborhood with, with the existing properties though. If there is a lot.
Oh, but for existing properties, so there should be a house number then.
If there is an existing.
Right, and it does say that, lot and/or house numbers for existing properties.
Yeah, exactly, and that's always on there, because there'd be a lot number, like lot two from the A and R or.
Okay, number, name and address of record owner.
Is that a clarification that you can get from Janet? Like, what, what's the process in that department for somebody to get a house number?
Oh, from, uh, the key, from the assessors?
No, it's the building inspector. I don't think.
Comes out of the accessory though.
Yeah.
The house numbers?
Yeah, your address.
Okay, that's thinking. Think I would have known that after all these years. Huh, okay.
Uh, name, address, seal, signature, engineer survey there. Uh, names of all butters as they appear in the most recent tax lists, unless the applicant has knowledge of any subsequent change.
Okay.
And existing and proposed lines of streets, ways, and easements. Uh, can I stop for a minute? I have a question. Many times, these developers are willing to pay for all the preliminary stuff, but technically do not own the property yet. In other words, the sale of the property is subject to a full movement down, or whatever, whatever they want. So, I don't see here where it says name and address of record owner. I guess if it shows who the current owner is, that can be different from the applicant.
Yes, and that's a really good question, because that's something we really are careful about. Um, if the applicant is not the same as the owner, the owner, actually, let me go back, the owner has.
Has to apply, he has to be. Has to apply. He has to be the applicant, right?
They, yeah, they sign the application, the engineer signs it, and stamps it. Now, the engineer can, um, can, uh, fill out an authorization to represent that owner. And that's how it's done most of the time. That's why you see them in the hearings. But the owner does sign the application, and we can't take that signature unless it's a wet signature. It's, it's an official signature.
All right, that's fine. We were on number N. And then, existing proposed lines of, of lines of street, ways, and easements. Any easement is located so as to potentially affect access to the property. That a copy of the easement language should be familiar with.
That has been the case in the past, and we've had to ask for easement language.
All right. Next one is the location of all buildings in skirt suits. Now, the one existing parcels at five-foot intervals. And the location of any. Topograph of dishes might interfere with the use of a, of access. I don't know. Um, the five-foot interval. Well, that would seem appropriate for a large parcel being subdivided.
Yeah, a, a.
Right.
A lot of times that's not the case, or, or the engineer will provide one with the contours.
No, but that gives the, gives the planning board overall, overall idea of how, what the parcel is along.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
Do you want to leave that in or just, yeah?
I don't, I think that's important. Location of all bounds, bricks, fences, guardrails, barriers, or locks.
Walls. Notice of any decision by the zoning.
Anything else?
Fun with there? Including but not limited to variances regarding land or any building thereon.
Oh, wait.
That's gotta be there.
R?
S.
S.
I went past R. I mean, I just read it. Carol, do you want to do some?
Which ones do you want me to? Who are we?
We're on S. The statement approval under the subdivision.
After.
We did the contour thing.
Okay, then you.
And then location of those, yeah, that's gotta be there. Yeah.
And then notice of any decisions by the zoning board of appeals, including but not limited to variances regarding land or any building thereon.
Right. That has to be there.
And the statement of approval, approval under the subdivision control law not required, end quote. And sufficient space for the signature without planning board numbers.
All right. I'm just trying to see potential problems here. Number R. How would a surveyor know those things existed?
Uh, because all zoning board of appeals decisions are recorded.
Totally correct.
Other than. An appeal, like if you do an appeal, that's not necessarily recorded, you know what I mean? Like if you're.
But the decision of the appeal would be.
Well, it's on, up to the. Property owner to do so. So, let's just say you appealed, uh, to the building commissioner's determination and not failed. You don't have to report it, you know? There's no, nobody's going to come find you and say, you need to record this because you got your decision and it wasn't in your favor. You just don't record it. So, a lot of this, you know, maybe in the file.
But is the first one reported? The denial?
No, so the town, the town doesn't have to record the decision. It's, it's up to the applicant. So, the town is not going to go record the decision. Do you know what I mean? So, it could be a loophole. But I think your question is, um.
Yeah, but that's something that you would be looking for if they didn't put it on here.
Correct. So, that's what, one of the things that I go to. Is I'll go to the file in the land use office. Or, as, as we get more and more in, online in our permitting system.
It'll be there.
Then I'll be able to look through there. But yeah, right now it's really important to have both. So, that's one thing I check. Um, is there any other decisions that would be important? I mean, conservation, they have the MLIs. I don't know if that's even comes into play.
Lawsuit. Just supposing. And a butter has a special permit for something.
Yeah.
So, according to this is the standard for filing an application. That special permit on that a butter should be noted or documented on the submission.
And a registry. Anything that's in the registry.
So, as far as a planning board going to review. An applicant. It may be important to know. That right next door, that property has a special permit. For a dog. And how that would impact. The board's decision.
You can't ask an applicant to research on your neighbors privately. They don't know. That's not fair. You're not reviewing the, the person next door. You're reviewing and a request.
For an application. Right. And reviewing that, all of this. All, this whole number of series of requirements on the. An application. Is for the board to have information in making their review of the applicant's request. So, as an example. And a butter adjacent to. What the applicant's requesting. Would happen to have a special permit. That whatever it would be. Could have some impact. On how the board will approve. The applicant's request.
You have no jurisdiction.
Yeah.
As to tell, to tell a property owner whether they can or cannot provide their land. Based on many things.
I'm not talking about that.
You are, because your, your role is not to evaluate it as an application. The planning board approves an A and R. That's all you can do.
Because approval is not required.
You have a, a huge case to build, as, as town council explained to you. As the planning board, you can approve an A and R. But if you deny it, then you have a very hard. Evidence to defend.
No, no. I'm not looking at it from that perspective, okay? I'm looking at it from a perspective, an applicant comes and there's an adjacent property with a special permit. And within the application, the guy says he's going to build. A new two-family, right, you know, right at the setback line where this property is. And we say, wow, there's a dog town right there. Maybe you shouldn't have children. Maybe you should alter your configuration of the buildings.
But that's beyond our purview.
That's nothing to do with an approval not required.
Because it's not our department.
Has nothing to do with it.
Okay.
It says, read it, approval under the subdivision control law. Not required. They do not need to file for a subdivision. But you're asked to approve. To, um, support that, basically, is, is your role.
And as, as long as they have everything in the application.
Right.
And meets all the requirements of the application. Then we don't have jurisdiction over. If they meet all that, we don't have jurisdiction over what they do with it. That's the building department. That's, and if the building department denies it, then it's zoning board of appeals.
Correct.
But approval not required is by right.
You can divide your land if you are within, if you.
You know, if you have the acreage and you have the right frontage. It's, it's, it's a no-brainer. You can do it.
Use doesn't come into play.
At all.
That might be what keep confusing you. Use has nothing to do with an A and R approval by a planning board. And that's why you won't see it in the regulations at all. The only reason the zoning board decision might be in there is that because that property may already have a use on it, and that may, you know, be. Yeah, so it's stripped down.
I understand.
Or they may be out of compliance with a condition of that ZVA decision. In which case you wouldn't, you know, I don't know what illegal, you know, ramifications are, but. Things like.
But that's something we would ask Adam.
Exactly, yeah.
If it wasn't, if something didn't look right.
That's right.
You know, uh, when you got all the information, then.
Yeah.
You know, what is within our purview is what we would ask Adam.
Yeah.
Because we don't need a lawsuit.
Do you want me to keep going?
Yes, please. I was hoping we can get through this section tonight.
Okay, number two. All plans shall be drawn to a scale of one inch, one inch equals one feet. However, it is the policy of the board to waive this requirement without written request whenever the scale is increased for the purpose of allowing the entire plan to fit on one sheet and in the opinion of the board, there is no loss of information or clarity by such increase in scale. Three. Label any area of land that does not need the current frontage or acreage requirements, a quote parcel. And any area of land that needs both a quote lot. Lot shall be assigned numbers or parcel shall be assigned capital letters. Plans that use the term lot to describe areas that do not need quote the frontage in acre requirements will be rejected. Four. Any way known to be a private way shall be clearly labeled as such. Number five. No street may be labeled as public way or other such notation unless accompanied by such evidence based on review of the town's records that will demonstrate that the way is legally a public way. The use of the phrase quote public way on maps or plan, whether or not such plans have been filed at a registry, does not by itself constitute adequate evidence. Six. Ways used for frontage must qualify under the definition used in the Townsend zoning by law. The applicant shall provide such evidence as may be necessary to establish this. It is the policy of the board to waive this requirement routinely for the large number of roads shown firstly to the board as being maintained by the town. However, this does not diminish the authority of the board to require such explicit evidence for ways not known to the board of which the status or condition is endowed. Number seven. Except for curative plans and properties of the recipients of claims, no property unaffected by a plan should be part of a plan. Eight. If any property does not have sufficient frontage, then the plan shall include one or more notations completely explained by such property. This does cause the plans to show a subdivision. The following notations are examples of notations that may, depending on circumstances, be acceptable. Number eight. This parcel to be conveyed to enjoyment lot. Where the recipient lot is clearly identified on the plan and the conveyances to all of the owners of the recipient lot are shown on the plan. All parcels to be conveyed must be identified by one or more such location. Number B. This is not a subdivision under Mass General Law 41, Section eighty-one L, because lots each have buildings that were standing when the subdivision control law went into effect in Townsend. Uh, number C, parcel is not available for building due to. Where the reason provided is adequate to show inherited classes, not available for building. And number nine. If any property likely adequate frontage is to be labeled, quote not available for building or other such civil notation, then the application must be accompanied by such deed, restricted covenant, easement. Or other document that will demonstrate where the property is not available for building, it cannot be made so, and the plan must clearly know such provisions. D. In determining access, the planning board will consider both the adequacy and condition of the road providing access and the feasibility of access from the frontage to the billable portion of any lot. If a road is not yet constructed, then the adequacy of any bond or other provisions will ensure the construction of such road will be considered. The latest edition of the approval not required handbook published by the Department of Housing and Community Development may be used for guidance, and the planning board may choose to consult with Tom and Tomson.
Oh, that's something that we have to change, because that, there was an update to that housing to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Right? Remember it was now the whole communities or?
Yes, and they talked about that today.
Oh, so the, the title's different?
Yeah, so the department's changed. Department of Housing.
It's Department of Housing. At, at the state.
Yeah.
Um, so it's not the Department of Housing and Community Development, we say.
Yeah, and I'll find out what the change is.
Is that state or federal?
State.
State. State, yeah. They just changed it at the last meeting there.
I thought they talked about it as a new department today.
Oh, good. Yeah, yeah, it's a nicer name, I think.
And they're, I mean, they have a new chair. He's only on for a week. And then the vice chair is, um. One of the state reps, uh, she's out of Clinton Sterling. Area. So, I actually got her contact today. I haven't, uh, emailed her, but I'm gonna keep in touch with. Her and, um. Senator Cronin, and then some other rep that was there, but they're all on the housing thing. So. Oh, we, oh, what I talked about with them today was asking them a question. Because the last statement that was made by the guy who's the head of the housing department for the state. Was that they decided to give back to the people some of the land that the town, that the state wants. So, then I brought up what happened with, um, the Dudley Road parcel and how we wanted to swap with the land across the way for veterans' housing. And. They looked at me like they really didn't, they didn't know how to answer that, except that, because we were told two years ago that they would help us with that when Sheila Harrington was on it with somebody that Chaz knew at the state. And they said it'll take an act of Congress. To get it, to get it done. So, now, now they're pushing for this. So, I don't think it's gonna be, and one of, one of the explanations that were made was that, uh, the only thing they could help us with, with the, was with the bureaucracy of it, not the legal aspect. Because there'll be a, a pro, there's this constitutional legal process to give back town, for the state to give back. So, I understand that.
Yeah.
But that should be cut and dried. It's the bureaucracy that they have, vote to change. So, that was brought up today, and like, it's the first time I've heard that encouragement, you know, for, for two years. So. Go ahead. Sorry, didn't mean to, but I, but I meant to tell you about that, um, tonight.
That's very interesting.
Very interesting, considering we, we're like, over a third of Townsend is state and municipal owned.
Right.
So, it may not be, and like, uh, like Jonathan, you know, pointed out. A lot of times, the, the land that the state has taken over is conservation, or forests, or wetlands, or it's not just. Our conservation doesn't have everything, or it's wildlife and, you know, well, game.
Have it, whatever.
But not every parcel is. And one of the things that they're working on, like with Fitchburg and, um, Lemonster, are old. Town or city buildings that they're not using anymore. So, they're working on programs to try to get somebody to take it over, even if it's. So they're working on programs to try to get somebody to take it over, even if it's for a dollar, and they develop it. So. Those were encouraging comments today.
Yeah.
You know, especially to somebody that has, the town that is so, so much of it is owned by the state, so.
Let me.
Okay, yeah, me too. All right, sorry. Okay, me too, let's do this quick, we'll finish up that one day.
The board may take the following actions on plans submitted for enjoyment under this section. The deadline for reaching any of these conclusions is the deadline required by the subdivision control law amended eleven six, two thousand and six. One, it may reject the application if incomplete or not in compliance with our requirements. The fee will not be refunded. If a new application for a safe property is submitted within six weeks or forty-three days, then the reapplication fee should be seventy-five dollars, so it's not going to be the hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I have to move everything up like the board?
And the two hundred fifty dollars for each one.
Right. All be the same.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, next lot of parcel increase over the original application. This re-doctor will only be applied once, subsequent reaplications will pay the full fee. Two, if the board determines that the plan does not require approval, it shall, without a public hearing endorsed on the original plan the words, plan quote planning board approval under subdivision control law not required. Said original plan shall be returned to the applicant and the board shall notify the town clerk of its action. And number three, if the board determines that the plan does not require approval under the subdivision control law, it shall so inform the applicant and return the original plan. The board should also notify the town clerk of its determination. The fee is not refundable in this case, nor will it be applied to any reaplication.
Again there.
And so that's the end of that section, do you want to keep going, finish the page?
Because the next section is, is a.
Preliminary subdivision.
And I don't have a complete.
Oh, we don't. I don't think I do either.
I'm on the second. Please complete that situation.
Um, actually, I do, but okay.
I think I do too.
Yeah, it's one seventy, it, my, my paperwork goes to one seventy-five dash twelve. So we're ending with. We're ending before one seventy-five dash twelve.
Yeah, preliminary subdivision.
Make that note for the next meeting.
Okay.
And, well, okay, so, uh, the next meeting is scheduled for June twenty-sixth and July tenth. Now.
I'll be on vacation starting this.
June twenty-fifth?
I won't be in that week before that meeting, but, um, you know, I'll, I'll certainly be able to push the agenda and, and whatnot. Or I'll make sure that someone in Land Use Board reads it.
All right, let me, let me ask you something then. Because I'm, I'm tired too.
Yeah, you're gonna be right through them.
Yeah. Do we have anything booked for the twenty-sixth?
Not at this time, there's no appointments, no hearings, there's actually no applications right now.
Okay, I'm so excited about that. So if it pleases the board, can we have our next meeting on July tenth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, it has been moved that our next meeting, we are not meeting on June twenty-sixth. Our next meeting will be July tenth. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second now.
Any further discussion? I'd like a roll call, vote please.
Carol Hoxsey, yes.
Robert Derry, yes.
Laura Schiffer, yes. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn at nine twelve P M.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine twelve P M.
So the twenty-sixth is canceled?
Yes.
And next.
Is there a second motion to adjourn?
Uh, five seconds.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all does in favor, excuse me, roll call vote.
Yes, Carol Hoxsey, yes.
Robert Derry, yes.
Laura Schiffer, yes.